Maybe we'll please come forward. As noted on the top of the agenda, I would like to make this statement in compliance with the government's emergency order, this meeting is one of the 10 individuals, masks and social distancing will be enforced. I have to note that this is pursuant to government made as much of 2024 order, it's going to be the reasons that we are coming here on. GLT38, Section 18, and the government's last 15, 2024, involves the circulation of some of those people that may gather in one place, this meeting, the town event, so much of it is being conducted in person, in a meeting at Old Town Hall. Total in-person attendance is currently nine individuals. Social distancing, official masks will be placed throughout this meeting. Steps up and taken by the town to clean this hall, its residents and all members of the area, if personal cleaning supplies are available. I realize that wearing face masks can be uncomfortable. So if anyone needs a break to step outside against a man, please request a brief recess. At the conclusion of this meeting, we've taken personal items such as cups, empty water bottles, pens, pencils, etc. with you. Place them in the trash receptacle to the restroom before you leave. Thank you for your cooperation. The other thing I will mention is that this meeting is being recorded and if it's possible, anyone from the public, which is called in, that is something that they can do. Again, this is part of compliance with the government's order. Now with those things agenda, so we will begin with the closing of the meeting. I pledge allegiance to the law, to the United States of America, and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, unified, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So I represent this meeting in taking. This is a Zoom meeting, as it is on our agenda. Zoom over reading afterward and call number or all listed. If anyone should call in, and we will await. We'll be right there, okay? If anybody calls in, if I have a chance, I will take a question and respond accordingly. First, I'm...
It's not being heard, why don't I pay you for it?
Right. There's agenda, there's discovery fields development. And I represent us today from Strawberry Fields, Mr. Owen Hill. Owen Hill. I attended the last meeting and we have waited here for us relative to our recommendations to them regarding waiver of motion, not all of the stormwater provisions, by law, identity regulations, requested by developer Strawberry Fields. And while ago, we sent a letter to the zoning board asking them not to wait anything. So the purpose of this agenda I have today is to allow someone from Strawberry Fields to speak to the board and give a clarification of why all the waivers were requested and everything we need to do is for us to make a decision and also follow up with the zoning board relative to what waiver needs to recommend currently and the reason standpoint. So does this sound all right? All right.
I don't know what the council is going to do. So what we need, we need to, that we came to discuss the stormwater bylaw. Because the 40B process has built streamlined how the office under one administrative protocol, that being the ZDA. With this project in particular, there is a stormwater management plan being put in place and reviewed by the ZDA's review engineer, Peter Williams, that's why we're quoting him. So the board, basically the government of that works, the board would waive the specific local bylaw in favor of the 40B process. Now, the 40B bylaw also says that if there's any specific concerns that the town has about the area, then we want to help bring up who can incorporate that into the comprehensive permit. So if there are any concerns here that start a bylaw and come here and talk to us, if there was anything specific to the site, we can incorporate. It's my understanding that Neil Williams did not agree on this compliance, he should have asked these stormwater management guidelines. He is. Because the second last section of this plan, it did not keep stormwater in, so that's why. And when I asked Jonathan, he said, no, it will be here with stormwater. So he's done that for multiple sites in town, with, but there's been a stormwater management plan that's been put forward that he needs to stay down. Well, this one here does it, I mean, you know, just for one, you get houses with basements in the water there, how are you calculating model water that accompany this thing? So, like, just for one, you can't follow it. Right, so typically, all of those comments go to Peter Williams, and that goes above the comprehensive permit. Right, why I said stand by, because you're not needing stormwater anymore. You've got drainage bases less than 50 feet from wetlands, and it says, raining is stormwater anymore, you can't be really 50 feet away, and you're already 50 feet away. All of that is done within, sometimes, the conservation. Correct? Well, see, you have a part of this conversation, go around that. This board is normally responsible for stormwater, yep? And so that's why they're saying, look, you don't need stormwater, so before the zoning board goes and approves you, let's need stormwater. And from what we understood, Neil Williams would not be hearing from clients for stormwater. So therefore, you're waiting until after your plan's completely approved, to then file conservation, to find out if you need to move drainage basin or raise a road or whatever. So that's what your client's saying, need to raise some for yourself. So going forward, we being now, we're going to narrow this out of plan. All right? We have to delete stormwater guidelines before we can build anything on site. All right, and there will be a review engineer from the town that has been in the past through William. There'll be the conservation permission to somebody else, but typically, it's the same review engineer who did the whole site plan, has to develop the conservation. So we'll see if you're going to stormwater management with the zoning board. That is my idea, yep? Jonathan, can you weigh in on that?
Uh, yeah, I'm excited. I don't know what you want to hear.
Who we want to do for that? Would you just go around the table so that all we know is who is here and that board here represents?
Tom Byers, who was planning board, member of planning board and chair for our house. For that conservation permission.
Yes, for that board, isn't it?
How come it's not Beijing?
That was on the back too. What does that mean?
Very good. Don't forget that ZDA. Uh, yeah, so I believe Todd, you showed probably February or March, asking about what Peter Williams is from U N, in terms of whether he's looking at for asking for stormwater rights. I talked to Margaret about that, she, I actually, I can't even recall what she said. I wish I could be more helpful, but at this point, I'm not really sure. If he's certainly familiar with, if I can sort of recall part of my conversation, if he's familiar with the D P regulation, but I don't know that he's specifically looking to expand his review. That was my understanding, because you know what they have, they won't be doing it for stormwater.
Yes. So let me back up a little bit, if you're probably wondering why we're here, okay? So I'll answer that. So this committee is charged with employing to the state federal government anything related to stormwater, right? What we found out is that we, as a town, are not moving some subdivision properly. We also, no malice intended, it just, it just happened. What we realized is that going forward, the way stormwater is going to be addressed, not just in the county, but throughout the country, we need to get serious about this. We need, we need to do our jobs. Answers like, we're not sure who's doing what, it just doesn't stick well with us. We're not, we're not going to improve our own. I understand on the 40B, that we do lots of needs, but ultimately, this board, this committee is responsible, when the state federal government asks tough questions, we need to have new access. We have a board that's maniacal, and we have to do it. So we just want to make sure that this subdivision, which is the only big subdivision we have on the pocket right now, is being done properly. That said, you're not alone, you have these things off, you have public here for projects, you have public properties, you have residential that we're also dealing with, we have chief officers for that. So this, this isn't just, you know, let's look at Stover's homes, this is, we're trying to do it correctly, okay? And that's exactly why, so typically, some sites may not have stormwater management plan, and they may not need to sign to meet stormwater management. Our case is probably casting by with it. And so that process is that, there is a plan that will be put together, all right? And it will meet all of the state's requests, but there's no waiver, you can request it for any kind of state regulations, anything all at once. But all of the protection are in place. Here, playing like, absolutely, don't you want to, we'll make all those changes, we will hit by our conservation commission. Correct, the point before every conference, the current process is to come up with a preliminary plan.
Well, depends whether you're talking to your manager, but yes. I understand that it's not, you know, so it's full-blown compliance, you don't even quote, but that's why it's a matter of wait till we get a little bit closer here. Now, that is a perfectly good request to make to the ZDA, that, hey, you would like us to be a little more sure about the stormwater plan, put in place, and everything needs to go, et cetera, et cetera. But that is definitely part of the process. So again, your, your plan is to revise the plan after the zoning board will be voiding our conservation permits. So all the comments we made to those zoning boards, like, the last two years, has not been addressed, a lot of what's been proposed for that. So, so the comments that you're talking about, there was one, I know there was one comment in February, not with any of the original content, but the, the ZDA, any comment given to the ZDA, I think we've been pretty active in addressing all the comments as they come forward. Well, we have seen additional test sets out there. So we will do everything in regulation with the 40B process. So there are certain local bylaws that we're asking for waivers for. There are certain things that are required by state, we've done a lot of expansive testing up there. But as things are required to make sure the design process is done, we're doing it. So all the comments that we put in our letter are all relative to the design, basically saying, I'm not doing the design for the zoning board. Which is why you have the chairman coming here. I would suggest that any waiver request would come and respond on both of this one, instead of the ZDA.
Just to address that, Tom, in the letter, I assume that they gave you a copy of this and gave you a return. In that two pages left, make it clear, you know, I don't need a waiver. And we used all the reasons why, and what our connection is to, to drive up this asset, our responsibility to the federal government and the state. And just to make this clear, I repeat, say, or we say, we call, we, he calls, he has the terms of ZDA, he has privacy. So, but I have a thought, you know, it's a PPA, okay? So I know we use those terms in the changing room, and that's fine, accept that. I don't want anyone to have a dissection, that we're following PPA and we don't follow PPA. No, it's only on ball of wax.
Absolutely.
Okay, so, um, you know, that's what I was saying, so when the ZDA, after that, I was at the next meeting, he had a request was made that this board could fully list the waivers and make recommendations. Well, meeting had scheduled, didn't happen because of the virus, and congratulations, how old is she?
My friend.
So, Mrs. Kelly, you came on, ran the father, but anyhow. At the last ZDA meeting, I was asked if we had anything exploited that, we had a cancer I needed to be scheduled. My main concern, as I expressed in the letter to this committee, is that, first of all, to blankly request, one after the other, waiver, 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 my first thought was, do the individuals who request all these waivers understand what's in that bylaw and regulations? Again, my personal opinion is that, everything we do, and everything we have done, can be carried out within the laws and regulations. To hear you say you put together a requirement, and to hear our agents say, well, what I'm saying doesn't mean requirements, well, then my responsibility to you, well, then it doesn't mean PPA requirements. Now, I am very concerned that you would ask for the ZDA to grant some kind of approval without at least a plan that is, if you have appropriate people on this committee, that they could say, oh, yeah, that's okay, that's okay, okay, get a word on this one, get this dialogue. But to hear that, the initial plan, that's a, that's, I'll say, problem. That's a concern to me. So I was being, William still, he's spoken to me a couple of times at that meeting. And one of the questions he said to me, which have been regulations that they want waivers under, stormwater is questioning or saying we need to discuss, my responsibility was problem. I also said, and he agreed, but he hasn't admitted it yet, I said, if you, Peter, if you take a look at our stormwater bylaw and lists, I don't think what they're asking for. Tell me what your prime concern is on. Okay? I could ask somebody on this committee to do the same. Never seen this list, that would be a big to me. He's concerned about everything that's in those lists, that is, they only need to wait. Now, I realize he is the, the town, the area person that is responsible relative to work that the ZDA would ask him to do, or any board that would ask him to do something that has to come between. I will also state, like I did in the letter to the ZDA, based on discussion that created the meeting, he does not have authority to make decisions or open to anything that this board would do, simply because we are recognized by the PPA. Now, I personally feel that if your company are represented, mentioning whoever, could meet with members of this board, I'd make this just as supporting, that I would keep that up to them. Who, what is a major concern to him? That some attempt to be made now to make improvements are a problem, and the plans that have been submitted, I am very concerned that the ZDA would approve anything, even just to mention on the water table that people have found. And Mr. Williams went here in this room today to say, yeah, they're all okay, and Mr. Billy was saying, no, they're not. This, this committee, we're trying to support, it's a building, he's, he's our person who is totally responsible when it comes to that kind of thing. By the same token, Zach, we got a building provision, we're closely loose to them, and both of them have said, water's a problem. I don't see anyone on this board saying, well, guys, you know, maybe we can work on it. I do not feel, based on what I see and what this board has done in the past, I don't believe it would be a down hardship on the developer. I don't think we'd be asking for your company to spend tons and tons of money on proposals requests, by the same token, on the stairway, and on public safety stairway, on safety being roads. And water health, water and potential water in basements, it's, you know, both hazards, and if there were roads with, with water, it just felt like a nightmare, and it terrified the sound that I happened to deal with in the country. But, uh, it's quite a bit of a tear to resolve. Now, I would also think that if you could discuss with the appropriate people that the company represent, then could be, even set up our meeting to just, if we sit down with Mr. Kelly and whoever else he chooses to meet it, to just go through this checklist, these are the, these are major concerns, all right? Try to work them out, right, to get the PPA to approve. It is much easier if filling this area and anyone else evolves, yeah, we've got, we've talked, hey, we need to do this, this would be a change, he meant it's what we, because that shows a lot of precision of all sides. I don't want us to turn into, you know, like, I think we can get through the whole thing, and do what has to be done, so that at the next, maybe not the next stormwater committee, that future stormwater committee, I'll say, I'll say a positive report on how much has been accomplished on resolving concerns, and we got a couple of things hanging, and a waiver made from the developer on, okay? We can't change rules and rents, you have to comply. Now, I think this is all possible, but there's no way, I don't represent this board, that we agree to get everything on the books.
So, can I just, it seems like there's just one big misconception. We are not asking from, you're exactly right, we have the standard, all the rules of staying on, right? I am not asking for any waiver from any of those rules. I cannot, I cannot, you know, still exist, I have to comply with PPA, E P C, G I R A, okay? Typically, how this process is done, before you can promise us, the idea is to create a conduit where we go to one board, the overseer, the one engineer, that's how the state was set up. So all the other boards in town can come and share, these are the concerns that we have, these are the things that we have to incorporate. And that's why we've been very present at the last storm meeting, and that's why I saved a lot of these conversations with you, out of the past. So when we're asking for waivers, all right, from the stormwater bylaw, it has nothing to do with stormwater management on site at all. It has nothing to do with, okay, we want to dump more water off, but we can't, we can't do that, all right? The 40B process, our process has it, but not our state process, it's protected in that regard, okay? All waivers for, proved, triggered, is the normal administrative thing that 40B is designed for, which says, we all need to go to, that's it. As far as the discussions go, as far as engineering, again, all right? No, I don't think, there seems to be something about water innovations. First off, I don't design houses with water innovations, I've done ninety houses in town, we've been successful in doing that. I don't want it as much as you don't. But second of all, even if I wanted to, okay, it wouldn't pass through, we said that preliminary design was ZDA, the ZDA approved it, but Peter Williams still has to review the final engineering plan set, and that has to meet all of those accounts. I can't put a single house in the ground until he's reviewed it and made sure that it's on foot. So that's where, there's, it seems like there's a concession that we're asking for, uh, to be exempt from stormwater regulations, we're not at all, we have to meet them all, all right? The only difference is, typically, it seems like this committee is built to make sure that nothing slips through the cracks. But the 40B process isn't, we're not slipping through the cracks, there's a design engineer, you know, he's very familiar with stormwater management, and will be reviewing it for stormwater. So there's no, we're on track, that is state-built, state-lined up, and that has an engineer, your engineer, reviewing it optimally. So all the waivers for, all right, is to make sure it's in line with the 40B process, that everything goes through the ZDA. All right, so there is no concern, you have nothing to be concerned about, about any, unless, you don't have to ask me for that, you can ask Peter Williams, you can ask the ZDA about that, you cannot not do it for stormwater management. About my test. So what I was, I mean, what I'm coming here to ask you guys is, are there specific things besides stormwater management that you have concern about? Because we're going to have a plan, and we're going to meet every single regulation, so is there something beyond that that you guys are concerned about?
I think the first, first thing to be told, and it's the fact that we're probably in maybe one of the, only one of a few towns that you have a stormwater committee. Unless it's just longer, unless we were in effect, recognized, I'll say officially recognized by the ZDA.
Yep.
Obviously, we take on the responsibility. Now, Mr. Williams, I don't question his qualifications or anything else, how about? I don't have a requirement coming before this board to discuss it, and it concerns me greatly that if our health agent is saying there's problems, what he can say, he cannot recommend to this board that we need to take certain actions, because what he sees that is that he's holding up what he has to do, because he's the one that's going to make recommendations to us, now that we want to follow with the line staff or chairman of the annual, to unfold. I realize that Peter Williams has a role to play, however, he has not played any role to this committee. Now, what the ZDA has said to me is, we need to go to conventions, and he said, we will take them to. If our health agent, working with whoever from your company, reaches some kind of agreement on the plan, even if it's the draft plan, and we understand it, that even if the ZDA says, well, we will approve the draft plan conditionally, meaning, uh, this developer and engineers, you've got to still work this out with stormwater, okay? All in compliance with every old regulation, state law, we got this, but that does not occur, there is a break here. I am not comfortable with presenting to the ZDA a plan that our health agent says, that, well, Mr. Williams may review it along the same game, but again, the line staff, the way to flow, comes to this committee, we get our questions answered, we give it approval, a conditional approval to move on, as soon as the ZDA, this is what we recommend, and under these conditions, we would say we will approve it. And the conditions are that what concerns are raised are remain unresolved at the point of that one going up, will be resolved by initial reading. Mr. Williams still has a role to play, because once we submit that to the ZDA, and I would expect him to review whatever has happened, which we are comfortable with this board, so he's also sure, okay, I understand what's going on, and what we have to do. But, in all honesty, since he's never attended one of these meetings, it's not his fault of any projects, all right? I, I can't say that I would not recommend to this board, I'm certain it personally won't get it, recommending to the ZDA, it's a little followed, but I, I'm not fair enough to remember, he got problem, I think he should clear it. Somebody from your company and the health agent work on this stuff together, and understand exactly what it is we're talking about, and what are the, what are the alternatives from the developer's position, so that we can address this. I also think, having been at the last meeting, when they started through the planning board rates, the request was, do we have to go through this one by one by one? The answer was yes. Before, I would recommend on behalf of this committee, that we, the head of this, yeah, we're all set. I would also request, we want to go through every one of those one by one by one, I think, I think that the ZDA is looking for us to write a recommendation, and we know that kind of session. If we can't resolve it locally, then we would have to go through one by one by one. I don't think anyone wants to do that. I don't think we want this, we want to be lengthy discussion, but again, on what we go, we're just to do exactly what I charge with, and so that charge is there, so the ZDA, rules, rents, whatever. If Mr. Williams had met with us prior to any of this, we could explain all of that to them. When he approached me and asked me what the concerns were on behalf of this committee, I said to him, if you look at the bylaws, those rents, I know there was concern about water, needing water on roads, potential water in basements, whatever. Without pointing at the loss... Without pointing at the loss, I asked him, look at our bylaw, based on what you know or what you've been, what it's telling me, which concerns that, that ZDA. What we can sure is ahead, and specifically raised, for example, the ones that were just raised here today, okay? Now, I really think this can fall yet, and it's all, and what I'm suggesting is that somebody from your community, excuse me, your company, make arrangements to leave this facility, any other appropriate measures for, if it's what I would say for, or post that sort of to be done. Whether it's, uh, addressing a particular loss number, we have concerns about loss number, and then, uh, if there's nobody here, we have concerns about, I'll say Congress or media or whatever. If you work out the response, that would go a long way. To bring that back to this committee, with a positive report, saying that, with Pilling and anyone else involved. We guys discussed it, the developer understand what they were coming from. But for this committee to offer a granted approval, in all honesty, I don't see a happening. But I think with cooperation, we get it done. We all have to go through every one of those waiver requests that this committee can put together, if they let them, to the ZDA with strong recommendations. But as you said, let's assume that the project is approved by everybody across the board, okay? Obviously, this Stormwater Committee and our agency are going to be involved until the very last house is built. Simply because we have to get its inspection to anything else. And it's an ongoing situation, I mean, how many years will it take for the building to be started today?
About six years or so, we have a guideline built in the part, but remember if I let Chris obviously know our turn, because he's very familiar with the 40B process, only if he called away with the Zoom meeting. Oh, that might work. Is there a way, uh, a number is, uh, okay, Chris, I'm going to give you the number here.
Excuse me? You were supposed to tell us, you had something online.
Oh, I'm sorry.
At the beginning of the meeting, this is, that's probably, that's open meeting law. But you're fully authorized to sit in the video, so we can tell us who was on the.
Yes, I have, this is for our team now, I'm good for now.
Well, so you can make a note of that, and we don't have time, and the fact that this wasn't.
But they had anything else that was following in.
But there were rules, we have a stack like that. It's the fact that we had virtual records online.
If you go to the town meeting, I'm there on that website, just click away and go right in. There's a separate Zoom meeting? Correct. So I will send you the number if I'll end it.
Sorry, I sent them here to the, uh, meeting agenda, without the Zoom, without the Zoom. It's not, it's not a problem for us to say, simply because if I walked through that door right now, I think this is going to affect the queue around nine. If I start to record or do anything else, I'm supposed to declare that to everyone present, and that wasn't done. That's a violation of the open meeting law.
Yeah, there's no recording happening, but I can see, I understand, it's weird comments that we're, we're in. So like you said, it's very visible, if you're on screen, I thought the motion is off, you didn't know that. Absolutely, I get, I get it. Yeah, there is, I just have a lot of moments to follow up on. There were discussions at the last meeting about Peter Williams and Greg Logan, uh, again, getting into your Zoom.
I would suggest we recess after people call in. Yeah, okay. Okay, I'm going to try to recess, but the time reached for. My glasses are steaming up to the floor, I can get some breath in here.
Okay, Chris, any questions?
Okay. Hold the mic to space, Chris?
Yes, Chris.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for letting me join via Zoom, I hope everyone can hear me okay. I know I've met Nancy, Chairman Goulard, several times during the zoning board hearings on the Chapter 40B project, and she invited the development team to come before the board, and as you know, we had scheduled the meeting with this board, you know, several weeks back, but obviously with COVID, we had to reschedule. So I'm glad to see that you're still meeting and you were able to invite Owen to attend. I think all of the discussion I heard, and Owen did a good job of explaining that ninety percent of what we're hearing here, as far as appearing before this local board, is a question of process. And I heard the chairwoman state that she wanted someone from the development team to come before this board and meet with the board members, particularly Mr. Pilling, and discuss concerns regarding the project. This is the meeting. This is the acceptance of the invitation to come before the board and hear specific concerns of the Stormwater Committee relative to this particular project. So the process in itself is not to create multiple hearings before multiple local boards regarding multiple local bylaws. That's the entire premise of Chapter 40B. So where the zoning board said that the Stormwater Committee had expressed concerns about the project, would you please go meet with the Stormwater Committee? Over my strenuous objections as counsel, because the development team at Stonebridge does their best to accommodate whatever local requests they can, they have taken time out today, and you have volunteered your time, even though the zoning board, under your own bylaw, is the authority that administers the Stormwater Bylaw in Dayton with respect to Chapter 40B projects. Despite all of that, we're here today to hear what the specific concerns are. So it's not a matter of going back and having separate meetings. I think, Ms. Goulard, that was what I had expressed to you during the, during the zoning board hearing, is that this is the meeting. And I have heard a few concerns that were specifically stated with respect to setbacks to wetlands and the level of the water table. And the point that Owen was making is that those are all Wetland Protection Act, DEP, Stormwater Management Regulation concerns, that number one, Peter Williams, yes, has in fact reviewed from a preliminary compliance perspective. So the issue of setback to wetlands has been reviewed, and if it's the type of basin, whether it's infiltration versus detention, whatever is shown on our plan is not a clear, flagrant violation of the Stormwater Management Regulations, it's just not. So there's some misunderstanding there. If you wanted to make a list of perceived non-compliance with the state's Stormwater Management Regulations, send that list to the zoning board. What we appeared before this board was for, was to hear specific local concerns, not to get in a debate about compliance with the state bylaw or the state regulations, because as Owen repeatedly stated, we must meet those standards. And if you look at the Stormwater Management Committees or the Stormwater Committees' Rules under Dayton's Rules, Section 7A regarding exemptions, you'll see that there is an exemption for projects that are subject to an order of conditions. So all of these local bylaws that the Stormwater Committee has are exempt from this project, or this project is exempt from those regulations, because we have to get a order of conditions for this site. So everything regarding the state's Stormwater Management Regulations, which relates to illicit discharges, the ensuring of particulates staying out of any discharges, unattenuated flow to wetlands, all of those issues are taken care of. So I was hoping, or the plan was, to accept the invitation, again, I'm the lawyer, so I'm the one telling Owen, Owen, you don't have to go, you don't have to go. But Owen's, you know, the part of the development team that wants to hear specific concerns, and we want to help however we can to explain the process to people. And the reason we're here is for you to give us specific concerns, and the only concerns I've heard are state concerns. And those particular concerns, I don't necessarily agree with the interpretation, and I know Peter Williams doesn't, but if there is a glaring defect, then that needs to just be brought to Peter Williams' attention. It doesn't need to be the subject of a separate hearing process, because that is exactly what Chapter 40B precludes. It is, it is just against my moral code as a Chapter 40B attorney to participate in multiple hearings. But again, this is not the type of developer that necessarily takes advantage of that, and we want to meet with as many local stakeholders as possible. And I think at its core, just as Owen said, what we're dealing with is confusion regarding the process and what in fact the state's Stormwater Management Regulations require relative to the local bylaw. And if there's anything locally oriented, a local specific that, you know, there's some local pond that is a cherished local pond that is stocked with, and I'm using, obviously, this is a sort of extreme example, stocked with some local historic fish that is unique to the town of Dayton, that is a local concern and cherished locally, that would be affected by this project, then that's the type of local concern that we're talking about. But nothing DEP, EPA, Stormwater Management Regulations, Wetland Protection Act is at stake here. We're not asking for waivers from those, which is why your bylaw, the Stormwater Committee's bylaw, says there's an exemption for projects disturbing land that are the subject of a Wetlands Protection Act Order of Conditions issued by the CONCON. So your bylaw defers to the CONCON. What your bylaw is concerned about is for large sites that are not subject to an order of conditions. That's what this committee, among, you know, town, town discharges, obviously, and I think that goes to the EPA general permit issue, which I'm sure you know, as of February 2020, there's some additional work being done at the DEP to try to reconcile some of that confusion. But to the extent there are local concerns that this committee has, we would love to hear them now. Otherwise, you know, it's a referral to the zoning board, there's no separate hearing to be had. So, you know, I'll turn it back over to the, to the committee, to the extent there are any specific local concerns, let's hear them. Otherwise, I mean, I've already spoken to town council about, you know, some of these discrepancies where this is exempt. And the zoning board, you know, it says right under here that the zoning board is the board charged, even under your bylaw for the committee, for this committee, with reviewing these issues under Chapter 40B. So with that in mind, you know, unless there are local concerns to be discussed during this hearing, you know, we obviously wanted to appear to, to make sure we heard everybody's voice and respected all the local volunteers that really put a lot of time into these things. But otherwise, we have to respect the Chapter 40B process.
Just to repeat the last thought, something went by, I didn't hear it correctly.
I was just saying, we have to respect, at its core, we are happy to come before this board to hear specific, unique, local concerns, not DEP, not setback to wetlands, not anything that is going to be reviewed before the CONCON, because, again, CONCON issues are exempt under your bylaw. But to the extent there's some local concern that this committee has, and not general concerns about Stormwater Management, then now is the time to describe a local, specific concern that this site has. And I, I, you know, that was Owen's intent in appearing, was to hear the local concerns.
Chris, I agree with what you're saying, we're not looking for multiple meetings and multiple hearings. The concern that I expressed, Owen, was that, the ZDA is waiting for this committee to send them something in writing with recommendations. I realize what you're talking about relative to local conditions, but by the same token, when our health agent has raised some concerns, I don't think it's unreasonable for somebody from your company to at least contact him. Do you just talk about what you intend to do to address those issues if you get, I'll call it, preliminary approval from the ZDA? I feel like the CONCON has.
So the two issues I heard were setback to wetland resources for, was it infiltration basins or detention basins?
I don't remember which basin that was.
Well, so that, that's actually, you know, one of the critical distinctions is whether it's infiltration or detention. So if they're not infiltrating, then the setback requirements might be different, but that's an easy one. That's, that's black and white, it's either allowed or it's not. And, you know, Bisher hires good engineers, and if Greg Driscoll showed a detention basin or an infiltration basin, depending on the setback requirements, number one, that's an easy question to get answered. And number two, the CONCON, the Conservation Commission, is, is charged with ultimately reviewing that under the State Wetlands Protection Act. So that is not a local concern, and that's easily resolvable. So the other one I heard was water table. Would, you know, does this committee want to elaborate on the water table concern, so that we can kind of, you know, hear, hear exactly what the specific local concerns are? What's the water table concern?
Well, we had asked that test pits were just by a third party or by the health agent, which is me. And they were witnessed by Outback Engineering, who's not necessarily considered a third-party engineer in my opinion. But, um, and we asked, I mean, I know we asked for additional test pits in the roadway and stuff to make sure the houses are above the water table, and we haven't seen any of those yet, but.
So is there, is there a local bylaw that would require those additional tests as far as along the roadway for the water table? Because I'm aware of one local bylaw that talks about groundwater elevation testing. So I think where we settled that issue at the zoning board, and my understanding is that there's been some additional review by Peter Williams, looking back at some old test pits that show an even lower water table on site, you know. I think all of our water table analysis shows that it's, it's higher than what was previously observed, and we're showing most of our construction above that water table, if not all of it. If there's some location where there's a high water table, I think we reached an agreement with the zoning board that we would do some testing as part of the final approval. And if, if someone wanted to witness them, I don't know of any local bylaw that would require that, I think. And to the extent there is, we're asking for a waiver, because we've already gone back out for the second time and had, you know, a third party, and, you know, I know the people over at Outback, and they're not one to fudge it. And I know Bisher's not one to fudge it either. So if, unless somebody is alleging fraud, or, you know, someone's cooking the books for some weird reason, there's really nothing local that would require that additional testing. So what's the local concern there?
Well, we've had several subdivisions in town where they've started work, or even solar arrays, and you get out there, and water table's much higher than the design when they start construction. And so this board wanted the ability to do construction inspections, and if adjustments need to be made during the time, that we could work with you instead of having to go back to the zoning board.
But that, that's the 40B process issue. So, you know, we're happy to tell the zoning board that they can share whatever information they have with your board, and you can consistently provide comment, but you're asking us to now delegate authority to the, to the Stormwater Committee for construction inspection? I'm missing where, you know, I'm missing the local concern there as far as this project, because that's, that's something that's just subsumed within 40B. because that's something that's just subsumed within 40B.
All right, hang on a sec. I've got stuff popping up on my computer. Hang on a sec.
Is that okay now?
Yeah, I just saw a notification popping up there.
So just so you know, I'm looking at your bylaw. Can everybody hear me now? Was there a technical boo-boo there? So your bylaw, you know, if this is about construction inspections, your bylaw says the administering authority does the construction inspections. So your bylaw says that, all right? Under Section 7, the administering authority for Chapter 40B projects in Dayton, again, this is the Dayton Stormwater Bylaw, says that that's the zoning board's purview. So, you know, we can only go by what the bylaw says. And now we're just saying that we're not even going to go by the bylaw. So that, you know, that's what I'm struggling with here. And we're here to try to get to yes and make sure everyone's comfortable. Because going back to Owen's comment, you know, we can assure you that anything we are doing on this site must comply with the Stormwater Management Regulations of the DEP, because there are wetlands on site. And your bylaw says that where there are wetlands on site and an order of conditions is required, it's exempt from your bylaw. So, you know, I think if this is about some other project where you had trouble with a high water table, I mean, that's, you have the right to find those other developers. I mean, do those other developers, you know, cheat on their soil examination reports? I don't know why they would, but if they did, then that's something to deal with other developers on. As far as this developer, we already said that if there, and actually, you know what? That might be a valid, we've already talked to the ZBA, that that's a valid local issue that we would be willing to accommodate as part of the final approval process. That if there are very specific, limited areas that you wanted to double-check, then we said, yeah, let's do that. So have you seen any areas on the plan you're specifically concerned about?
Yes, the houses, the roadways, and the detention basins.
But, okay, so let's go back to that. Where in your bylaw does it say we need to do soil testing for every house, every roadway, and every basin before we get a Chapter 40B permit? That seems a little, that seems a little bit much. Come on, you gotta give me that one, right? Where under the bylaw?
Just out of curiosity, if you're exempted under the bylaw, why did you ask for a waiver from the bylaw?
Because for this very reason is that we have a committee that it can be difficult to understand how Chapter 40B works, okay? So if we don't get a clear waiver, then we get people saying, oh, well, we get to do inspections and you have to submit, you know, your bylaw is, what, 22 pages long? 20 pages long? It is good practice to make sure that we get a clear waiver, okay? If we leave this meeting with the understanding that we can recommend to the zoning board that our bylaw says that your project's exempt if it gets an order of conditions. We agree with that, and it's on the record. And everybody understands that once we get an order of conditions, you're exempt. Okay, I'll live with that. And as a matter of fact, you know, I would almost recommend that. But where you're saying that you want a separate hearing process, you know, it would be malpractice for me not to ask for a waiver. And I don't want Bisher suing me. So, you know, I just try to be thorough. That's why we're asking for a waiver. So, you know, going back to the local bylaw, I did see one local bylaw provision. It was, and listen, full transparency, because I want to make sure we're all on the same page here. There's no local bylaw that would require us to dig up the water table for the entire site. It's just, it's not going to be done, and nobody does it. But there's a local bylaw that says if you're building the roadway below the designated groundwater level, that you do a test pit. Now, we asked for a waiver from that. I think we've already told the zoning board that before final approval, we will do that with our third-party witness. And if someone from the town, from the approving authority, again, the approving authority being the ZBA, wants to review it, they can review it. Now, since the ZBA, you know, has faith in this board, the ZBA can charge someone from this board to come out, whoever it is, to assist in that or to review. But they're not, you know, they don't get to delegate an issue of substance, that there would be some sort of, you know, veto right to say, oh, well, you know, the water table is zero, or it's two inches, or whatever it is. But the point is, none of that occurs now, that, you know, this is not, these are not the issues that, as a matter of fact, there's a provision under the regulations. I believe it's 5606, Section 4, of the Housing Appeals Committee Regulations, which are the 40B regulations, that says the zoning board cannot precondition a permit on compliance with state law or obtaining a state permit. The state permits are done separately. So the process is, we look at the local concerns, the specific local concerns, and then we go and make sure that it complies with the state law. Now, as a matter of practice, the local concerns essentially turn into a preliminary review under state law, which is what Peter Williams is doing. And I know Peter Williams and Greg Driscoll didn't miss something as straightforward as setback to wetland, depending on the type of basin. I'm sure it was just, you know, maybe it was some confusion about whether they were infiltrating or just detaining stormwater or whatever. But, and if that's a huge airball, then, you know, yeah, we probably, that needs to be resolved. Now, generally, when that's resolved, is in the final approval process. But, you know, I think Bisher would probably have a long talking too with Greg if we had the basin in the wrong place, but I don't think that's the case.
No, I found it in the plans. It's labeled on the plan as infiltration basin 1A on page 14. But it's also labeled as infiltration basin 4D. It's the same label for 1 basin.
All right, hold on, I'm on.
I just happen, I'm looking through a small set of plans.
But can I say something here, please? Even, this is Bisher Hasham. Even if both Greg Driscoll and Mr. Williams missed it, we're still going before DEP, I mean, before CONCON, Local Conservation Commission, which will go through another vetting process. And there is no authority that ZBA has to supersede that. So I don't understand what the problem is.
Yeah, I mean, we're not asking for a waiver. We can't, again, we cannot. But then, as far as this committee's concerned, that's a wetlands protection issue. I'm missing how that's a local Stormwater Committee issue under your bylaw.
Chris, I have something thinking here on the committee that we should comment. But before I recognize Mr. Adia and Mr. Greg, you talked about the ZBA being the local approving and therefore, I would assume enforcing agency relative to anything related to the 40B project. Did I understand that correctly?
Not only the 40B project, but also under this committee's bylaw.
Now, and certainly I understand about Conservation Commission's role and order of conditions. But I would point out to you that, obviously, the ZBA, the committee itself, would not be sending people out to the field to enforce whatever. They have a zoning enforcement officer. The zoning enforcement officer in this town is Janavia, the building commissioner. So as I said way back when, when I attended the first meeting over at the middle school, this committee that you're meeting with today is all conclusive. And the intent is, we don't want to have lots of meetings and lots of hearings and arguments or anything else. We tried to bring together, and I think we've accomplished the fact that this committee represents all of the major departments that relate to whether it's building homes, whether it's building a new school campus or a solar farm or anything else. So I just mentioned that zoning, the enforcement arm of the ZBA happens to be Mr. Adia.
No, no, that's.
So I listened to everybody. I made my comments earlier as to why this committee is concerned. This is a complicated site based on its location, geography, amount of wetlands, etc., etc. And I'm not professional on wetlands, so I will talk more about that. However, what I will say, after hearing council, after hearing the developer, after hearing the committee, it seems like the zoning board has the authority to designate a consultant on this committee to confer with regarding stormwater. So I think the solution would be that the zoning board take action to appoint a consultant from this body to confer with on anything stormwater related. Even if Peter Williams has oversight, which I question whether he does and how much depth he gets into, I think that this board, at least one person, maybe two, should be consulted as this project progresses to ensure that we have compliance across the board. And when we do our reporting, when we accept the road, which we've done for this developer in the past, we're going to be accepting something that we want to take responsibility for.
Madam Chairwoman, may I?
Yes.
So just traditionally, in a 40B project, the quote-unquote enforcement arm is a construction monitor that is provided for in the permit that reviews construction as it progresses. Now, if you don't want, if you want, if you'd rather appoint someone from this board to serve in that role at the town's expense, then that would make sense. But, you know, traditionally, it's not the way it works. Usually what happens is, and again, whoever it is, reports back to the zoning board. So you're right, you're correct, that yes, the zoning board could nominate someone as their eyes and ears. But then the point is that those eyes and ears report back to the zoning board. So that's all well and good. And then the next question is, as far as the timing, I think where we got held up in conversations at the zoning board was that all of this would happen before the zoning board took another step forward on the preliminary permit. And what Owen, you know, was explaining earlier is that, and this goes to the very heart of Chapter 40B, and it's why, you know, your bylaws at least identify 40B as an issue of consequence and how this is addressed. But the very purpose of Chapter 40B is the plan before the zoning board is preliminary, okay? It does not have to show perfection. Now, I'll tell you, as far as different developers, Bisher's plans go and Owen's plans go above and beyond what other developers present from a preliminary point of view, which is why you've probably seen problems on other projects, you know, where we don't necessarily run into those problems, because we poke Swiss cheese holes in every site that Bisher goes on before we start putting plans together. So that plan is preliminary, and the hang-up at the zoning board was, well, the Stormwater Committee's telling us that we need to get the Stormwater Committee's approval first and get the Stormwater Committee's sign-off and get the Stormwater Committee to do more tests and get the Stormwater Committee to witness test pits. And we said, whoa, 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 hold on, hold on. You know, we can only compromise 40B so much. We're willing to go meet with the Stormwater Committee to hear their concerns. And again, that's this meeting, and we wish it happened a month ago. But, you know, we've been dealing with the pandemic. But now, having talked through these concerns, I hope that you can appreciate that a lot of this is the process of it and that we're happy to include appropriate conditions based on existing local bylaws that address some of these local concerns. And if one of them is that after the permit issues, that a designee from the Stormwater Committee will act as the board's eyes and ears as far as just, you know, helping with the monitoring. You know, again, you don't get a veto right, because the zoning board is the ultimate approving authority, and the professional engineers, you know, have a role as well, because it's their stamp. But it's not, you know, it's not out of the realm of possibility to put all these issues to rest, to say, all right, well, as long as we have some eyes and ears during the construction process and the final approval process, that will resolve it. So is that something that, you know, maybe I can draft up with Marguerite as a condition to alleviate these concerns? And then we'll get a clear understanding that, you know, because this project is subject to an order of conditions per your bylaw, it's exempt. So we at least got a clear understanding on that. If you're not going to grant a waiver, at least acknowledge, you know, the verbiage in there so that there's no confusion. And then that coupled with the eyes and ears issue should let us move forward.
I think the suggestion that Mr. Adia made and what you have just said, there's certainly a reasonable way to resolve that part of it. I would use the term "desert needs." And the reason I say that is because, first of all, we're a six-member committee, so three people can't be involved at the same time. But what I would suggest is, I would desert needs. Certainly, two at a time, but at any given time, one of those could drop off and another one would come on. For example, let's assume that we had desert needs and it was the health agent and the building commissioner. But then a question arose relative to the streets. Well, in that particular case, one of those gentlemen might drop out and we might say, for this particular question, we would have the highway superintendent be involved. As I said, there would never be three at the same time on the same issue, because we'd be violating the open meeting law. But I think that is a reasonable accommodation also, because there are people here that have expertise in certain areas. So that if a question arose, whether it was about streets or about something else, somebody from this committee could, I'll say, step in for that issue openly. Obviously, we don't question the authority of the Conservation Commission. It's absolute. So I think what you're suggesting is it is a workable solution. I think part of the problem is, way back when in the beginning, initially, when the issue of the Stormwater Committee having some kind of interaction with the ZBA on this project, it was like, Stormwater Committee, butt out, you've got no say. Well, we all know this from the couple of meetings that I was at. Attorney Mitchell, when I asked her specifically what the perceived role of this committee was, my perception is we're supposed to come up with recommendations to the ZBA. We recognize the ZBA makes decisions. However, the ZBA said, it threw Attorney Mitchell, you're right. We want to know what recommendations you have to make. And again, we're not looking to be contentious or anything else. We're looking to protect the town. So along those lines, I think we want to draft something and email it to Roz, so she can send it out to the committee. And we can, let's say, find to whom and send it back to, so that we can reach some kind of agreement relative to somebody or some bodies from this committee who, depending upon what the particular concern was, could advise, let me just put it that way, advise on whether it's the best way to handle something or how to modify something. Or by the same token, if the developer says, you know what? That isn't really going to work. We need to talk to somebody about this, because we don't want problems. So again, I really think we can work this out.
Yeah, so I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Madam Chairwoman, the catalyst for this seems to have been more of an interaction with the ZBA than even an interaction with us, because, you know, we never meant to step on any toes or otherwise. We were just following the Chapter 40B process. So I think this is probably, I mean, for what you're describing, something that, you know, you could even work out directly with the ZBA, because the ZBA has the right to appoint their eyes and ears. And I don't want to presuppose to know whether the ZBA wants to do that. So if you and the ZBA can reach an understanding that the ZBA says, well, you know, whenever, you know, we'll have somebody witness the pits or we'll have someone from. or we'll have someone from stormwater um, you know, get copied on XYZ, the ZBAA can certainly do that, that doesn't affect us as long as, you know, from our perspective, it's clear that we have one permit from the ZBAA uh per chapter 40B. So I, I just, I don't want to get in the middle of it, is, is kind of what I'm hearing. And, you know, we prefer if, and it seems like there have been discussions between this board and, and the zoning board. So I would just say, continue those discussions, let the zoning board use you as a, a designee. But just recognize, I think the critical takeaway for this meeting is to recognize that this site is subject to an order of conditions. We cannot build without an order of conditions. This committee's bylaw says that if you have an order of conditions, you're exempt from our bylaw. Or at least, you know, it, that's the way it reads to me. You're exempt from all these requirements because they understand that if you have an order of conditions, you are dealing with erosion control, you're dealing with stormwater management, you're dealing with water quality. You're dealing with, so you're dealing with all those, those issues. So it's already, it's already built into your bylaw that it's not to be.
Waiver, waiver. So it's in there as, as an exemption and you ask to waive that exemption?
We're asking, and again, I, I thought I made clear.
Yes, I think that's part of the problem here is like, you didn't just come out and say, look, we want to waive the stormwater bylaws for this reason. You just said, waive this section, waive this section, waive this section. And I think that's part of the whole confusion here too, is that you only look to waive certain parts of things. Instead of just asking for it like outright to be waived and here's your reason, it was already exempt anyway, so just waive the whole thing.
Well, and again, I mean, part of that's attributable to the process because I, in dealing with uh, you know, these projects day in, day out, and I think, I think Bisher's development team generally, when we see a stormwater bylaw, we say, order of conditions, why are we even talking about that? And I commend this board and this town and, and the chairwoman for having such a focus and, and heightened level of concern uh for stormwater, given some of the history that Dighton had with uh their, their general discharge permit, which again, I, you know, I, I would, I would reference you to some of the work happening at the DEP right now. I think some additional guidance was issued in February about how the stormwater management regulations uh relate to these types of, of general discharge permits for the very reason of avoiding this confusion. Because, you know, when I, again, when I hear, when I hear stormwater, it's order of conditions, done. Again, when you have wetlands on site. So it's, it's perfectly reasonable as a 40B practitioner for me to say, all right, we're going to get an order of conditions, that's why we want a waiver. Um, and it's to avoid a situation where we have a local board saying, oh, well, you know, you didn't get a waiver and, and we're entitled to this and it doesn't matter that you have an order of conditions. And again, anybody can miss that section if, if you're not, I mean, I read it a couple times and, you know, it wasn't necessarily clear to me. Uh, but it is clear and it makes sense that it's exempt. So if, if the board agrees that so long as you uh get an order of conditions for the project, you know, through the DEP process or superseding order, that are, that our local bylaws satisfy. So, you know, I'll take it either way, you know, I'll happily withdraw the waiver request if you say that, you know, the waiver is conditioned on obtaining a, a superseding order of conditions because we have to get that anyway. And then once we get that, it'll be absolutely clear that there's a waiver.
Chris, I just want to state, I'm not trying to put the developer in the middle between the stormwater committee and the ZBAA. I think some of the, I'll call it confusion came about because uh this, when this committee was formed, I don't think people, when I say people, I'll say town officials, really understood what the, I'll call it, the charge, the responsibilities and everything else that this committee has been uh blessed with under EPA regs and everything else.
It's not easy stuff.
I think, I think it was more a matter of, oh, uh, that's just another committee and whatever. And um, I think that we can, we can work something out. Uh, as I said from the beginning, uh, the first meeting at the middle school. Um, the reason I was there that night is because I was not invited, but heard there was this meeting going to take place about the big development. And it was like, what are you talking about and how come we don't know about it? But I think the letter that was issued initially um made it clear to everybody uh what the responsibilities of the committee is, are, and um what we're looking to do to work, and I will say cooperatively, with any project, not only 40Bs, any project or proposal that's coming before this town uh to work cooperatively and in the best interest of the town first. And obviously uh business or industry or whatever, whatever the proposal is. Um, so um, I'm not, I'm, again, I'm not blaming ZBAA, I'm not trying to put you in the middle. I think it's kind of an educational process that this is what this committee does, this is what its responsibilities are. Um, so yes, I think that uh certainly this committee can discuss um what we should, we've got to put a letter together and certainly we can put in some of the I'll call them conditions or suggestions that have been made today so that this committee feels confident that number one, it's not on the outside looking in, that number two, certainly recognize order of conditions from the concom. And that going down the road, the plan is that we will work together cooperatively and, and on your side, if, uh, when that letter comes out, you're comfortable and want to withdraw waiver requests, uh, that works too. Um, I think the, the more we can do together and the more barriers or concerns that we can eliminate, uh, will only be a positive thing as far as moving forward. Um, Mr. Gray, you had your hand up before, do you wish to address this?
Yeah, I just wanted to.
This is Mr. Gray from the planning board.
Just speak up, so I'm like, sure. Mr. Kelly had just mentioned it was uh.
Sorry, I'm having trouble hearing.
So Mr. Kelly had mentioned it was uh potentially a power on planning or foundation of this label. I think that might have been addressed in the board's recent revision which came out of April. Again, that committee had very, very minor changes to it, wasn't very substantial, so I didn't send it to Tom. Obviously, you know, he's a little bit of a hack as well as committee committee. But, well, it's definitely which face it was. I mean, January 29th. Did you say that was four or one? Yes, it says one A on the box, but I think it's four D. Okay. All right, I don't think it was done, it's the end shot on sheet 14.
Yeah, I see, I see.
So just a question about plans. You, yep, Mr. Kelly, your plans are dated what?
Uh, most recent one is January 29th.
Chris, is there anything to add?
Yeah, uh, the, the revision that um, the member of the planning board, I apologize, I missed your name in the, the thing, but the, the revision date that uh the, the member of the planning board just identified, April 17th, uh, 2020 is the most recent, recent. And all of those, all of those are up on the zoning board's website. They've, they've been up, Jonathan's been great about updating all that stuff. So it's revised through April 17th, 2020.
Does anyone else, are you committed to comment at this time? Yes. But before you do, um.
Yeah, sorry, I just wanted to clear, so we're considering adding waivers and again, if you can give us consideration to that.
Say that again, please.
Maybe the safety question.
Uh, no, I, Chris, correct me if I'm wrong. I think where we are right now, that was Tom Ferry from the highway, uh, highway superintendent. I think where we are right now is, and this committee is going to have to add one. Um, we're at the point, we, the committee is at the point of drafting a letter to the zoning board, which we will share. Um, and it'll probably be wise to share it in draft form with you so that we don't have any misunderstandings before it goes to ZBAA. That we have had this meeting, we have had discussion and that uh the stormwater committee is requesting designees as we discussed. And that um, uh, stormwater committee recognize order of conditions uh as we, I'll call it at this point, controlling document, rules regs, relative to stormwater. And that um, on your end, you're willing to withdraw a request for uh waivers based on this letter indicating that we have some kind of unusual agreement relative to moving forward with the project?
Yeah, I think the key statement was that the order of conditions controls. So essentially uh make it contingent on the applicant obtaining a superseding or, or an order of conditions or superseding order of conditions for the project in which case uh the, the uh bylaw will be deemed exempt pursuant to, or the project will be deemed exempt from the bylaw pursuant to section 7A, I believe. And then it's very clear, and if for whatever reason, you know, we, we, we don't get an order of condition or a superseding order of conditions, um, or, you know, I, I think the key is if all the wetlands dry up, you know, and for whatever reasons, there's no wetlands on site, that's what the stormwater committee's bylaw is really focused on. It's where the, the concom isn't there. So uh if for whatever reason we don't, then, then we'd have to come back before uh the zoning board and then this committee's uh bylaw would be triggered again. So yeah, as long as that's clear, that, that would be, that would be acceptable. And that way, you know, because Marguerite is very sensitive, Attorney Mitchell, we, and that's why we went through some of the planning board's bylaws line by line and they wanted to rewrite them rather than waive them because uh Attorney Mitchell is very, very uh in tune with not waiving bylaws if, if there's no waiver necessary or if it's not applicable. And I think we as the developer are comfortable in saying that as long as everybody understands that we're exempt, we don't necessarily need a waiver. So uh condition your approval on an order of conditions and, and, and do the designees and then we're happy.
Okay, and in that letter will indicate, again, this letter is going to be a draft form, you'll get a copy of it uh for review. And this letter will also indicate that you will withdraw your request for waivers because we're going to say order of conditions will be the uh superseding authority um relative to uh this issue that we've been discussing.
Yeah, I, I think that works. I'll take a look at your language, but that, that's correct. If you agree that the order of conditions controls and supersedes uh this bylaw, then certainly we don't need a waiver because it, because the order of conditions controls it. And the bylaw says that. So where we are in tune with, with, with not waiving them and clearly me as counsel, I just think it's easier and cleaner. But this committee uh has, has uh, you know, really spent a lot of time focusing on this project and really wants to make sure they're protecting the town. And because, you know, we as a developer, a development team uh, you know, want to work with the town wherever we can, that's something we can work with you on. We can make that language work. So I, I'd like to see the draft letter and, and Bisher, Owen and I can talk through it. But I think, I don't see any reason that won't work.
Gray? No?
Owen? Yeah, I just wanted to say on the conference. Uh, right, well, this is an individual project. We have been in town for about six years now. I'm thinking since the birthday and then how our goal will be calling a lot here, you know, and blocking whatever. And that being said, regardless of designees or anything like that, I don't think there's been a time that people were, that they were active here. Uh, we haven't been inclusive, okay, there's a problem, let's talk about it, let's get whoever out there and make sure we're doing it. Uh, that's our goal here too. So regardless of how things are set up with the ZBAA, our goal is to make sure we're really good. Anybody who has concerns, you know, this is an ongoing process, we'll probably take this, you know, again, five, six years. I'm sure we're going to have all the involved in that.
Madam Chairwoman, because um uh, you know, this, this is now less of an issue between the ZBAA and the stormwater committee and we're sort of coming to a solution that uh would allow us to help you, I'm happy to suggest a draft letter if that would help you.
Um, I was just going to ask, if I could use it, on draft the letter, if I did, I assume I would get the vote. Um, and circulated to the entire committee and Mr. Gray since he's here from the planning board. Get it to you.
Don't move.
Stormy board, sorry, yeah, the Kerry is playing, sorry about that, John. That's what happens when you're in the same office. Um, so um, that, that way I can get feedback from you and also from committee members in, so that whatever ends up in that letter that the stormwater committee will send to ZBAA. Uh, we will have, we, you, us, will have this agreement prior to. Uh, so we won't have any keys happening so that when they get it, all of a sudden, oh, wait a minute, there's another problem. So uh, that's what I'm going to attempt to do, okay?
That, that sounds fine.
Okay, Mr. Gray?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, is the letter planning to address the stormwater committee designees uh as well or is it merely just a waiver?
No, I will mention in the letter that um we discussed the designees and that, and when I say designated, just as I explained, there will never be more than two on a particular issue simply because we know that we're at a forum and we have to post a meeting, which is kind of ridiculous. But I foresee that the building commissioner and the health agent uh may be involved on certain things. But I also see a need in the future that the highway superintendent may have to interact with one of these. And by the same token, if one member might be working on a particular question, that member is free to draw on anyone else on this uh committee, who will help, whatever, who might provide expertise. Okay, so I'm looking to cover all the bases that I'm having to post meetings and to avoid violating the open meeting law. So yeah, the recommendation is that I'm going to try to improve everything I could think of that came up today that would be appropriate. And then when Chris gets a chance to look at it, uh, he can make some suggestions so that we end it with a document uh we all can live with. That's what we intend is, okay? So could I get a motion that we prepare a letter, a draft letter to the ZBAA outlining the discussion and uh agreements reached today relative to uh stormwater issues and the strawberry fields project? Is there a motion? We'll put that in the motion, for a second?
Second.
On bias, discussion? You got anything to add, Chris?
Uh, no, I mean, subject to review with the applicant and its counsel, you know, to, I think that's.
That's going to happen.
Yeah, I mean, that, that all sounds good.
Okay, all of them. I oppose abstaining, motion carries, remain on this week. So we'll get that going and get a draft out to you. Um, I will stack the draft, send it to Ross. She will get it out to the committee and to Chris. Um, all these ones should go back to Ross, we don't want to get into discussions. Our, Ross or her assistant. Who shall be assistant, who shall? Shall we name names, sorry? So that way, we don't get into, get any kind of violation of anything that we have discussions outside of the meeting. And then Ross will get it to me and he'll, will work through it, come up with a final draft. Uh, again, that final draft will go back, will go to everybody and to Chris. Again, that final draft will go back, will go to everybody and to Chris, and once we get everything looks good, and it can be signed and sent, we'll be good to go. Okay?
Sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Everybody on the ones who want to agenda item 3D? Then you want to take a break?
If you guys have a little stick around. Mary and Owen, so I can easily make that.
Oh, yes, Mr. Perry's got a road we paid. Thank you, John. Thanks, John. Somebody made a motion to take agenda item 3D, also by Mary. Motion is second.
I'm going to look my lips, reading his lips.
Motion is second on Mary. Most same.
We've been working on this for several months. Yeah, I want what we have. So, you know, what time do I see that? And we're certain that it's recorded, it just doesn't forbade me the bounds, but if you record according to the first law amendments, you write your ways in the handbook address, you have those teeth on side. I think we have legal records, direct product there. Okay, let's say when I started, I couldn't find it, but I didn't say it didn't mean it wasn't recorded. Sometimes we record things on different names or addresses. And I'm like, it wasn't readily apparent the registry that it was there.
Okay, what happened was, Tom, I am with Carrie, and we went through practically word by word by word of the data we filed and looked at these areas, and what we could determine was the way the D was reported in that covered both the yellow and the pink. Okay, it wasn't as clearly written as it should have been, but based on that, that's when we decided that Mr. Perry can move ahead, this guy get the permission he needs to access the property, one way or another, but we think we can correct this whole mess. And we believe they saw what we figured out. The pink and yellow belong to the town of banking and the citizens. Okay?
Do the roadways have to enter? Do the roadways, are they just feeded to the town too? Or is just the easy?
Are we accepted those roads, correct?
Yeah, I mean, that's how we, that's how we. Well, we had a town meeting, but I don't think there's ever a D that was recorded to transfer property out of the house. The roadway itself, the roadway. Let's see, if you're saying that the D to the easy, but I don't have a roadway on there. I'm going to say roadway, you've come to Esther Brook. And I haven't yet. I just, I didn't have anything to say. Do you refer to the original, the old J that there, or especially the new? I think it was the second phase, I think is what I'm talking about. I'm just curious, but I mean, obviously, I can find it, but it doesn't mean it wasn't there. Sometimes we record things on different names. It's probably originally based on maybe the, that might have been wrong. But this is why it's the subdivision inventory, the sarcasm stuff, they'll have all this information in one place, so I can, we can follow it quite along. Oh, what are we missing? I mean, this is the document.
Tom, one other thing, 3E, the middle school draft line, is that you or is that Jim Harris?
Yeah.
No, we said the baby. Who would know what to be? So.
So.
So. So, yeah, a quick update. Is there anything else on this, Mary and Harry, that's the regulations, I don't have any questions? Because most of the cities, it's very difficult. They had their plans presented before. Okay? Okay, Tom, out to Mr. Rossick, and let me know. Let him know that this is very, will be in touch with him eventually to address the issue. Is that okay, Tom? Okay. All right, so instead of doing some tea time, we're going to stay. Mr. A, could we get a motion to take agenda item 3E out of water, please?
I don't want to go back to the government.
Tom, you want to take the 3E or not? The driveway to school?
I'll be there if you can, John.
Okay.
Motion to take that 3E out of water.
Motion is second.
Second.
Session hearing that all of the above?
Aye.
All of the extensions, you've looked me on, spoke to me. Yeah, I just.
So we received a proposal from the engineering firm for the roadway reconstruction project for the DESDMS complex. It was very high, but I think it was appropriate. I brought that to the town administrator, she did not want to bring it to town moving for this year. So I contacted the school, told them that there was probably enough to be a joint discussion between board selectmen and the school department regarding expenses. So I think that'll probably be taken up in the fall. I don't know if it's outside of our purview, but so that's, that discussion is going to have to carry on. All that said, I got a call from the engineering firm about a month ago, who said they would be out on Main Street doing drone work for the town of banking. And that if the town was not opposed, they would like to video the DESDMS campus via drone at their own expense, knowing fully that the project may or may not come to fruition. So that has been done. So we are way ahead of the curve with respect to the project if we do decide to move forward and incorporate funds for the engineering portion. The engineering portion was just south of $100,000. So I think that's why now we're jumping shot. But that's a very complicated site. There's a lot of conservation work that needs to be done. There are some filings, I believe multiple filings. I mean, they place a CONCOM. So, you know, when I met with the engineering firm, I felt that it was just a fun. All that said, we need to now go to the next step, and based on front administrator's recommendation, that conversation will be taken up through the school department to fund us, or at least fund the engineering portion. I thanked the engineering firm on behalf of the town for offering to fly the drone over the site for a judge, at least initially. But, you know, in their own words, they were in town, and they indicated that right now with season, with the fact that the school is empty, this was the perfect time to fly the drone over the site. So thanks very much, they did it at their own expense. So I just want to say from my own perspective, professionally, that I think this project is important. I do realize that it's a little level of uncertainty about the school department and how it's going to operate in the future under different circumstances. But maybe more so now than ever, we may not increase travel because parents are less willing to put kids on the buses. I don't know. I know that's somewhat speculative, but I think we need to keep that in mind and continue with the progress.
Can you comment on the background?
It was a dollar value, you had?
Just over $100,000.
This is an engineer?
Yeah.
Yeah, the whole project coming, of course, you know.
Yeah.
A million?
Yeah.
This is a long drive. Okay. And if you're going all of the 2006 County Street, or is that what it helps?
I think it's. Maybe me.
Oh, wait, Floyd? Do you have?
I have it on, anyways, he's almost done with this. 2006? That's a rental property, right? Right, that's 2010. Not 2006. She asked me about 2006, right? But that's the one off the back, right?
2006 is the property adjacent to Mr. Rock's property that puts all the way back.
That's the only.
When the rental property where the building is, is 2017. 2015? 2006 is 2005. Mine is the.
Hey, wait a minute. Somebody made a motion to take 3C out of water, please. Second? Discussion hearing on all of the above?
Aye.
All of the extensions, you have next, go ahead.
So he filed a stormwater permit with us to pay the fee. However, his taxes are still owed, but he cannot get a stormwater permit if taxes owe. He went to meet with the client to see what was owed, and he told, however much it was for 2019. Well, he said, but I didn't have an office there in 2019. So they said, go to the assessment office and file a rebate. He was using that as a business interest for all of 2019, so the assessment was saying we can't give a rebate because you've been using it as a business interest. And that's the last I know of what we have heard. Oh, the assessment office has been in as much as void of help if I'm making, so we're still waiting for him to pay his taxes, so we can give the stormwater.
So is he working that?
It's finishing the one at the room, not working on Friday, we talked about it.
Not working on 2006, right? So he answered, no, he's not.
Okay.
Can I just start anyway nicely?
Okay, thanks, Tom. Okay, we'll go back to agenda item 3B, okay, on the radio, so.
And just in case, if it didn't show up on camera, Tom Perry, just leave it to me.
Well, it's about 2:53 on Perry.
Radio, so this one's kind of been on me. We sent them, we went out into two testes, and we found all three of us, the one table was higher than any design, in two of the three bases. We sent the information to an engineer, all three weeks later, we sent back basically saying it's too late, the project has changed to the design. And I emailed back and see the other two days there, one was like the engineer, and one is licensed, super level. And then it came back with a new design where they've changed things to adjust to the high water table, and I haven't had a chance to look at that yet to determine. My to-do list, my to-do list is for stormwater and traffic systems back running to COVID-19. So they have sent this revised design, and I haven't looked at it.
Well, that's ultimately in the right direction. This is the last time I was aware that they were questioning the ability to license certified toilet lining, which had a proximity area. Which seems to know me very well.
But I think that the Bob's got the ball, and he said, no, we'll make a difference, so.
It's not the bottom of the bill anyway. It doesn't affect anything. It's not like the lead ring.
You say to people, face gap, this is a specific people group.
Oh, but they did say we need to wear orange when we go onto the site.
Oh! I'm excited. I look for the records today that I'll be able to sign on normal occasions. They are keeping a tight ship. They are very neat.
Did I hear you guys?
The site itself was very organized. Everybody, they had all of their backup documentation specially located, so I am no concern for projects, so.
Media.
What's that? At the beginning of the road between solar panel one and solar panel two, the swamp and filled up behind the thing I can come across the road.
Oh, they have pipes under that road?
That's what I was told. They had been told to put pipes under it, but apparently the pipes all worked. I was out there Friday.
You want to go there tomorrow with me?
I can go anywhere. Do you need? Do you need the water? The water's running over the top.
No, I guess you can just send an email. As long as you can identify the area, I guess it's between the first and the second. Okay. We can, you know, as soon as you leave the first and get onto the road and phone for the second, you're in. It's right there. So the water will go top, and you can take the pipe and make your walk.
Well, that's not where the pipe went in. Pipe went in maybe 75 gallons further west. But apparently that pipe can't work, and probably ought to have one where it's running across the road.
It could have been the last day or kind of some big machine that
Yeah, they have.
Which means we had not proved some of the fire. Construction.
Well, I can just send them an email and say, hey, what's going on out there? We noticed water running across the road, you know, and see what his response is. Oh, yeah, we pick up from there, we put in another pipe or whatever it may be, so. Because they can't have water running across the road or wash out the road, and they couldn't get through, so they, it's in their interest to keep the road nice.
Well, once the stuff on the other side of the road gets washed, it's
There was no one there Friday at all. But it didn't, it looked to me like they hadn't had anybody there for quite a day. And it's a truck, if you want to go all the way in there, and it's not. But we arrived on the work there, on the road and the hill, and it was really nice. They really did a good job, even on the west end, where they're protecting a lot of land, which I would finish, and I went down in there. And they can bring that job. The only problem was that it's that they had backup on the silt fronts between the one and two solar panel. And there was a problem with the first off there. Still a problem.
So in your email, it was, so choose, I would recommend that you reference the fact that we got an active construction site, and that emergency personnel may need to reach that obstacle already. And having a roadway ended with water is not good for immediate response.
So the road you're talking about is the road that they agreed to fix that they didn't construct?
Right.
Okay, that's good.
I might even take a ride out there tomorrow. If there's someone there. If the weather's nice.
If the weather's nice, we can walk in.
Yep. You fine with?
Fine. Okay. Yeah, seven, agenda item 4A. Do you want to read it straight?
Well, this is the marijuana, the center E, so they submitted a second plan to us, we reviewed it, they had filed their stormwater permit. We got to make some changes to apply any updates to the plan. Ultimately, it's a, the existing park and lot to the regular building, they're improving all that. The debt facing the water going into the range basin. The question is, Alex, make sure that he's got his new frame pipe on the ground into the basin, so I want to make sure it's sized appropriately. And he gave me some additional documents, and I'm okay with it. But we're at the point now, there's no public area involved for this, because it's not a subdivision or a toll array. So we accept the issue of stormwater permit. So the question is, this was the stormwater permit from Borado that you're looking at, with all the commissions, and it was a matter of, are there any conditions that you want to see on here? Does it want to be? So I do have plans.
Is this weird called to keep going today? Down, that's all, lock the road.
Look, if I look to it, it's much better when it's not ran out of zero stormwater controls on the site. Anything to do with improvement, but what they're doing here, stormwater and the regulations, so it's much better. You see the system, the bottom of the claim is a separate. See, the system, the bottom of the claim is a separate system, which is a non system, like hooky out of the ground now. Uh, and on the right side is a drainage system. That's improvement over what they got. So, on those conditions, um, a pre-construction meeting is a good idea. I don't see them need for the maintenance of the driveway on the street because it's all downhill, so we don't need any order of the whole street. We just need them to install and we need to order them all. This is the number three, the SWIP, the standard. Number four, providing hydroplan, I still think we want it for the drainage system, not for the driveway. I don't think we need five or six or seven because those percentage, um, they were relevant to Borrego. And so, they may need eight, but I don't think we need nine. Unless we want one for the drainage systems, I don't, that's something we want, so I can do now as a committee.
Well. I guess the problem would would happen if we got trouble with the maintenance of these. And then we're forced to intervene. A bond would be official for us. I'll be a, another layer in the process, but it would, it would help us maintain the people so choose that. Is there licensing, um, provided for these stuff we brought? Marijuana sweat shoes, I'm not.
Yeah, I believe that is, they don't have a business, uh, since it did.
Well, that's, that's once every four years.
Board of Health issues a marijuana license, I hear. Oh, right, that's us, right? Marijuana license? Board of Health? Excuse me. Board of Health is a marijuana license, correct?
Yeah.
Yes, true. So, I would only be willing to weigh the bond if it tied into a license renewal or if they didn't maintain it. And I don't know if that's immediately possible, but we can discuss it. Otherwise, I don't think you'd give up the bond because I, I want to have some protection if I maintain it.
Well, and and we want the inspections to come in every year and, you know, I, you know it's gonna happen and people are gonna stop, not necessarily this one, but in Denver, people, they pay us and people forget about it and they stop doing it, so.
Well, I think the other thing to us, I consider would be kind of like sole plans, is to change hands. If we got a bond slid in that is in control for talent management and sell it, or sell it or whatever, uh, and if that's something, it work has to be done. So, I just think we need the bond. You know, I I, I think that's important to protect the town.
Now, this one here, we had asked, we're talking about hundred, where Borrego was paying all multiple range basins, well, who wasn't there? This one here is one catch basin with one drain basin that's right off the pavement. I think maybe like a thousand dollars or fifteen hundred to do it.
Yeah, I know, I think they don't have a lot of money left for a little bit more. About fifteen hundred, so I think we'll use.
It seems reasonable. So, that's. So, what's the next step with 200 billion street?
Basically, because of the public hearings, um, I would have signed a permit on the foundation issue with the conditions, as long as we agree on the conditions. So, I would ask for both of these conditions or whatever, and then I can issue a permit. All right, so cross out. Number one, cross out street cut in at the end. So, we're just being, we can start to be implied for excavation. Number two is just going to be installing, maintaining soil origin control, get rid of the equipment, the driveway. Number three, we're keeping. Number four, we're going to get rid of the hand driveway. Number five is gone. Number six is gone. Number seven is gone. Oh, envision why, you know, I said the groundwater test was there because I did the one we were there for the septic system. I said, take a hole there. He said, okay, it's so much easier. So, number eight is gonna stay. And then number nine, we're going to just make it fifteen hundred dollars. And that's all I got, obviously, the project numbers.
Yeah, strike the project numbers. So, there's challenges to the stuff that we're worried about with stormwater. They haven't applied for a marijuana permit yet. Does that matter?
Uh, no, because typically they're just renovating the building.
Yeah, because they're not ready to somehow want anything else. Why would they?
So, when I, while I process my building, um, basically I'll consider commercial use. It used to be dedicated for marijuana, why would you change that as any detail about how it's all good? And when they're factoring, they're not, they're all right, you know? But still, it's just that they use. So, it's definitely used for that. So, so here's your question, if marijuana, so you're not getting the position, okay, without renovating the building, you can just rest style, any detail? With a balance, that the system makes on your money down for it, that was true, and uh, functional sole on management system.
So, if they go, and then when marijuana, whether it's the building is in good shape, well, we comply as long as we go over our, you know, the, uh, the stormwater. Okay, so just to look at that, those two conditions that, uh, I mentioned, we have adjustment one, two, three, I said, four adjustment, uh, eight becomes five, nine becomes six. We have six.
And nine is adjusted.
Yeah.
I think at some point, like, just like the Conservation Commission, we'll develop like a oil plate set and we can just go down and go, yeah, let's use condition one, seven, fifteen.
We don't want to take in charge of the stormwater.
Uh, okay, yep.
So, establish a storm, make it a bond account, we want fifteen hundred dollars for.
So, it's like a yearly catch basin and detention basin. There's no thing.
Uh, oh, so, for yearly infiltration and detention basin?
Nope, scratching infiltration. It's gonna be for yearly catch basin and detention basin. There were a thing of.
Establish a storm, make it a storm account, we want fifteen hundred dollars for yearly catch basin and detention basin. Okay, yes, okay.
It's not completed by anyone. Yep. But yeah, it was just, it was more of a place that we can just pick the ones we like. Because now we've done the pop oldies, you can't help what we like, so we can, it'll make like.
Yes. Did you get all that, Ross? I did, thank you. Okay, uh, could I make a motion to approve?
Send it to a section or is that? Yeah, it's not that deep. It's not, it's not that deep, so. It's a dry basin. It's not a wet basin, so. Okay. So, this is effectively, this is effectively destroying the water now and it's not, you know, a big system, so.
I have a motion to approve the, uh, stolen permit, uh, procedure as outlined by, uh, Mr. Tony Walter to 200 billion street. The motions for session. Discussion hearing on all of Vegas.
Aye.
Call of extension, both of us.
And Tom, I I don't know if I'd want offense in a commercial area, like in a residential area, it's one thing, but in a commercial area like this, I don't want people to be asked to tell me who we did. So. And let the animals in the woods manage it, it's not a sign, but in a residential zone, yeah, you don't want kids making this. But I got it, so. Somebody has something they wanted to bring up on the public input.
Yeah, I asked about 624 mill. 624 mill, they're expanding the 902 tree, solo repair, 902 tree, on another, a bloody piece of property. And I guess we're gonna be redesigning the whole land. So, they filed for sole on a permit and we asked them to go to testes. And we went out from the test that said, we're in a basin for four, five feet deep. We watered about eighteen inches down. So, they are now revising their range design. And I did let the planning board, office managers know that, I guess it was the name of the project, so we're waiting for revisions.
Yeah, the water pit was really, uh, in the upland, the machine was sinking. So, it was pretty wet. Good place to put a sole farm, because you can't help us there, so.
Is is what was tested the farm land or the woods?
The woods.
Oh. Is he gonna expand the farm land? I don't. Is he gonna put an open the farm land?
It is, yeah.
But you're not extending the farm.
This is a racine property.
Extending solar, right, racine property, but the farm is not extending. Farm is standing the size it is, and yes, you're right, he's gonna put elevated arrays that can spill farm.
Right, okay.
At least in theory, we want to see how that works there.
Yes, I'm like, playing very well. Okay. Uh, correspondence, Ross, can you get that? No, um, there was.
Looks like that's me.
All right, so, something we lose, something. Uh, there was a workshop today at the same time as this meeting. Um, they have been offering free web address and, um, I asked my two co-blocks if they would cover it and they won't have other web address. This thing is going to be available online, so I will check it out. I registered for one, today I believe it had something to do with climate change and I love this stuff and it was. And, uh, the second one, I can't remember, um, I believe it's something to, I found it in my guess. It's either stormwater related or it's climate change and mitigation plans and all that good stuff, so. If you don't get to see them, they're online, so I'll just check and see if there's anything that's on. Little of the minutes, uh, January twenty eighth, February third, February sixth, February twenty seventh. If no one has objection, I will accept a motion to accept all opposed with one motion. Somebody make that motion?
Sure.
You have a motion to second?
Certainly.
Motion to second, any discussion on the on most of the minutes, January twenty eighth, February third, February sixth, February twenty seventh. Hearing on all of Vegas. And all of extension, so.
Right.
Last assistant.
We were looking for my buddy.
Um, can we move to separate, uh, seven community for next month? Um, let's say, it won't be a month away, it'll be sometime in June, if we need it. If not, we can always cancel it, but I'm still waiting.
It's not on the same days of Board of Health, can you please?
There were twenty two things that we took off. Yeah, yeah. Last one was on that list. Yeah, so the two we took off were updated on three forty eight, three twenty eight, right? The Audubon by water review, that's of the subdivision, stormwater structure inventory. Uh, the stormwater pollution prevention plan, and that's four of them. We also took out the EPA proposed municipal stormwater general current modifications, the national flood insurance plan survey, and what that was again, that was.
Nice to have an agenda of COVID, I don't know about.
Um, all right, so this.
That's later.
The first day seems to be a good place. In the past, we hope that that's how things will be designated, three in hopes.
B C.
Assuming there is a coast, I hope.
Yeah, it's a new B C, yeah.
Um, how about, I'm looking at the third Thursday, the eighteenth, at one o'clock.
Sure.
And hopefully we can have pizza that day. Um, and so, Ross, if you had a chance, if you could just send me the list of stuff, I will have to get in touch with Dan Kwan to see if she's gonna be available. She's the Audubon person. And also, I think somebody from Serpent, I don't know if it's Bill, we'll see if they're available. Um, John, she's going to be speaking at one of these S A P things, I think I signed up for, so. Um, but then, Paul, seven, June eighteenth, one P M, stormwater. Anybody else have anything? Dot, open to a turn?
Ooh, sorry.
Motion they said on all of Vegas.
Aye.
Call of extension, we are clear.
It's on?
Three twenty, more or less.
I can't in the meeting, right?
Yes.
Call me anytime and I'll be.